Call the meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Teresa.
Nelson.
Here.
Orison. Larson.
Here.
Wunschel.
Here.
Hanson.
Here.
Reed.
Here.
Balk.
Here.
Item three, consent agenda. A is a motion to approve city council minutes of May 2, 2022. Item B, licenses, approved renewal of Class C liquor license with outdoor service and Sunday sales for Clay County Fair Association. Renewal of Class E liquor, Class C beer, Class B wine, Sunday sales, and ownership update for Casey's number 1894 at 800 South Grand Avenue. And renewal of Class C native wine with outdoor service and Sunday sales and extended outdoor service area for Flagfest for Century Farms Distillery. All subject to final approval by Iowa ABD. C is a motion to approve the municipal ban performance and funding agreement for the 2022 season. D is a motion to approve release of real estate mortgage for 1425 Third Avenue West from 2001 CDBG home rehab program. E is a resolution approving contract and performance bond for 2022 NPRL intermediate cover project with Leroy &amp; Sons. F is a resolution setting a hearing and directing publication of notice on a proposed text amendment to Title IX, Chapter Two, Section One of the Spencer zoning code to adopt a definition of dwelling, triplex, and also amending Title IX, Chapter Three, Section One, subsection A of the Spencer zoning code to allow dwelling, triplex, to be allowed as permitted use in the A residential zoning district. Hearing date, June 6, 2022, at 6:30 PM. I'll make a motion to approve the consent. Motion made by Donovan. Second by Tom. Any discussion? Please vote by machine.
Nelson, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Balk, aye.
Item four, we have a couple of public hearings. A is a public hearing on plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of cost for construction of the 2022 North Water Quality Project. I declare the public hearing now open. Any written comments against?
We have none.
Any oral comments against? Any written comments in favor of?
We have none.
Any oral comments in favor of? I declare the public hearing now closed. One is a resolution finally approving and confirming plan specification form of contract for 2022 North Water Quality Project. Motion made by Ron. Second by Donovan. Any discussion?
I guess, what location are we? I mean, this is in the north mall area, and where would this just?
Yeah, there's two sections on the project. Section one is in the Iowa Lakes Community College parking lot. There's two bioretention cells to be constructed. One's right on the north side of the community state bank parking lot. And then the other cell is further, kind of just off the northwest corner of their building. Kind of tried to not in the main parking lot areas and in the drainage path of the existing stormwater runoff. And then section two of the projects on the QRS site on the west side of the highway. And that should help alleviate the flooding as well as treat the runoff from that area.
Where does, does that tie into the storm sewer that goes south? And from there, it's already, how big is that storm sewer going?
Both of these projects go into the 18th Street Storm Sewer. And actually, there's a divide when we constructed the Fourth Avenue West Storm Sewer. There's the detention basin in the fairgrounds.
Right.
Now everything west of the railroad tracks goes to that basin and then down Fourth Avenue West. On the Iowa Lakes Community College side, that goes east on East 18th Street, all the way out to the drainage ditch.
Okay, so it goes straight east and catches that drainage district out there. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Please vote by machine.
Nelson, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Balk, aye.
Okay, excuse me. Two, Brian, do you want to review those bids for us that we received on that project?
Sure, I believe you have the bid tab attached. Three bids were received last Thursday. The low bid was from BD Construction Services from Spencer, Iowa, in the amount of $312,194. That was a little over 12% of our engineer's estimate, which is not completely surprising given the bidding environment we're dealing with right now. This project is being funded through the SRF sponsored project program, so we probably will be short. Or the overall project cost will be in excess of what the available funds are. We will try to work with the contractor to try to minimize that overage, but we probably need to prepare for that. BD Construction Services did do a very similar project by the Dodekagahn several years ago, so we would recommend awarding that project or the contract to BD.
Okay, any questions for Brian?
Well, I got one for the other, Brian. Being that this is going to be over budgeted, what is the process of funding on that or to pay that off? What are you thinking?
We would look at storm sewer reserves. The current fund balance is healthy and we have, the bulk of that is scheduled in the next five years, but there'd still be enough remaining to cover the overage here. And if everything, including engineering, we're looking at about that 60 grand over. So that would come out of those reserves.
All right, Brian, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, so I would either entertain a motion to table this or to approve awarding the contract to BD Construction for the 2022 North Water Quality Project for $312,194.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Motion made by Ron. Second by Lauren. Any discussion?
I think Brian's right. I don't think it's going to get any cheaper with the fee, because this is a lot of dirt work and stuff with equipment and stuff. So I mean, fuel prices are going to be, I mean, that's.
The concrete pipe prices, everything's, you know.
The piping's up, but yeah, I'm surprised it isn't much more or that it isn't higher than this, to be honest with you right now, so.
The original application was sent in a couple of years ago, so it's just the situation we're in right now, unfortunately. And like I say, we'll try to see if there's any areas where we can have some cost savings for that.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for Brian? Thank you, Brian. Please vote by machine.
Nelson, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Balk, aye.
Okay, five is a motion to approve permanent drainage easement, temporary construction easement, and SRF grass swale maintenance agreement with Iowa Lakes Community College in conjunction with the 2022 North Water Quality Project. Motion made by Lauren. Second by Tracy. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Pose nay, motion carries. Our second public hearing is on an amendment to the current budget for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2022. I declare the public hearing now open. Any written comments against?
We have none.
Any oral comments against? Any written comments in favor of?
We have none.
Any oral comments in favor of? I declare the public hearing now closed. One is a resolution amending the current budget for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2022. Motion made by Tom. Second by Lauren. Any discussion?
Brian, isn't this a little early? Are we going to have to do it again at the middle of June or the end of June?
No.
No.
No, this is our normal time. We have to, so I don't know if you want me to.
Yeah, elaborate on what is going on there.
So as you see in your packet, was a listing of all the amendments, majority of them, as you look down there, we're dealing with property insurance or work comp insurance renewals of those rates. Work comp is from last July. The property insurance would have been what we would have just approved here in April when we approved that bill, so as you see that. Some of the other big ones, as you go through there, you'll see some for employee payouts that were, when they left, were not and that weren't contemplated. So either they either resigned or left employment, we paid out their accrued leave, so amend that back into the budget just so we're not cutting those salaries short. You'll see some other ones were, you know, the lost distribution both to the school and the county. That's just a percentage of the revenue we bring in, so as that revenue was higher than we are budgeted, those distributions are higher. You'll see some equipment purchases, those were all approved by the council, and that property and purchase. The $750,000 for capital projects isn't anything specific, it's just to cover anything that may have carried over from last year. It's just to give a wide berth, so we, as we near the end, I don't know where we'll finish on some of the projects or if we'll have pay estimates coming in. So really, what we do with the amendment is to allow for the authority to spend it, because we can't go over any of the major program areas of the budget. So some of these are just to give us some birth, so when we come to the end of the year, some last minute things may get in there that weren't planned. That way, we have the ability to pay those and not exceed the budget. As we state, there is no increase in taxes or revenues to pay for these. A lot of these will come out of reserve or had their own funding sources, we went through, so.
Okay, thank you, Brian. Any other questions for Brian? Okay. Can vote by machine.
Nelson, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Balk, aye.
Item five is old business, which we have none, but we will certainly make it up with item six, which is new business and which we have a lot of. Okay, so. Under item six, A is an ordinance amending Title Four, Chapter Five, Section 21 of Spencer City Code concerning solid waste rates, charges, finance committee, and committee of the whole. Looked at this, and before we go into this, and I should have, before I read that, I think I'll back up a little bit. We have two items on the agenda. One is an ordinance which concerns our solid waste rates and charges. And the other is an ordinance which will change wastewater service charges. Before we go into those, and I'll reread item A into the meeting later, but I would like Brian to talk about the history of these rate changes, how we came about them, what the process was, and so forth. So if you would be so kind, Brian, to do that.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so we started this process about 18 months ago. We hired Public Finance Management, who does a lot of our financial modeling on debt service and our enterprise funds, and then assists when we issue bonds, et cetera, and that. So we had them do two rate studies for us, one both for the solid waste division and then one for the sewer division. Mainly, as we were coming up, it's to see if our, the fees we were charging were being equitably distributed by those that use the both services and systems, or were we out of line in places, et cetera. And so they've been working on those, like we said, for the last 18 months or so. And what they've recommended is what we presented to the council finance committee twice, and then to the committee of whole at the end of April. And so what we're looking at is with the sewer, there's a structural rate change and methodology included. Is that now, before, we had a minimum charge of about $9.51. That would have included your first thousand gallons of usage, and sewer is based all off on the water rate or the amount of water you use. That will change. There will be an availability charge based on the meter size at the property, so you'll see that there. And then the second column you'll see is, under this is the CSI surcharge. It's been relabeled as our debt surcharge. As you know, we implemented that CSI charge 15 years ago or so when we started doing separation projects. And then in the meantime, that fee has been raised to also include debt that the sewer system holds. And so. And so that is also being pushed out by the meter size. So you'll see the fixed charges. They'll also come down to the tiers. There is no usage included in your bill, so if you have no usage, you would just have that fixed rate based on your meter size. And then starting from gallon one, the first 50,000 gallons are at $5.01, which is actually, I think, a seven cent decrease in what the current tier is. And then tier two is starting at 50,001 gallons on up is now 4.51. That is a little higher than what it is. We used to discount that second tier a lot greater, and that discount is being reduced some. It's a 10% discount off of that. So the, yeah, so on that, when we looked at it, looked at it, the number of, oh, let's see. When we looked at it, really, we have about 4,800 meters according to SMU. 4,436 of those are in that 5/8 inch category. That also includes if you have a 3/4 of an inch meter, so some of them might be 5/8, some might be 3/4. Those are all included in that 5/8 inch size. And then on up through that, on the right-hand side, you will see the, some of the entities that have the larger, largest meters of this within town. Any questions on the sewer? If not, going on to solid waste, what you'll see here is our current revenue mix is about 51% of our revenues come from residential. 26% is commercial, 23% is that other, and that includes, you know, the dumpster roll offs, stuff, tag sales, and things paid for out at the transfer station, the selling, selling of the recyclables that we collect, et cetera. And so as we went through, we were trying to figure out how to redistribute that, not necessarily redistribute, but making those, that charge that are using that system pay their fair share. And so what the recommendations were is that there will be a fee implemented for dumping at the transfer station. That's been discussed ever since we put the scale in, as doing that, because right now, anything that's brought out, what is happening is the bulk of that, whatever is being missed, was being essentially put onto that residential rate to make up for revenue. And so there will be a fee for anything that would normally have a fee, so recycling, metal, things like that, that would still be free to bring out there. But if you're bringing out solid waste, there will be a fee for that. Adjusting the scheduled commercial containers to have that consistent relationship. So as we discovered, as we went through our, you know, we have mainly from a one yard up to an eight yard. And then size, and then a one to five time per week pickup, there really was no consistency in there. You know, if you would think about it, a one yard, once a week should be, and then twice a week should almost be double, et cetera. A two yard should be about double what a one yard is. Through that consistency, what we found is that there was, it's all over the place. And in one of the rates, we actually went from a, I think, a six yard went from one day a week to two days a week. It only costs $5 more per dump to have that instead of that. So there's going to be some changing to get that consistent relationship there. Also, that relationship on those unscheduled commercial containers at a consistent rate in relation to what it scheduled one is. And then for this first year, based on this, there would just be a small adjustment to the residential rate, basically of seven cents per month. And that is just to essentially round it up to a nice whole number for then in the future as we go forward. Then it's, we get kind of back to that number. This is very small to see, but this is all of the rates that are there. Like we said, we have about 112 different rates. Staff went through this, and we actually eliminated a few based on the discussion, because we either don't have those things anymore or they're just not a prevalent service. And so what we would do is, like we said, there's that minimum charge that's going to be set at $5, and that'll cover the first 150 pounds of garbage or materials brought out there. And then anything above that 150 pounds would be paid at a rate of $60 per ton. And that goes for construction, non-construction, shingles, all of that is, the rate would be at 60 a ton. And then, like we said, the first minimum, or the first 150 pounds is be charged at $5. You'll see on the containers, one of the bigger changes is we got rid of a size. We don't do, I think, eight yard or six yard with shingles. And so there will be now just four sizes there, two and four, two yard, four yard, 10 yard roll off, and a 20 yard roll off for shingles, and then some of that other, those fees. The special items down there, TVs, all of that stuff, none of that changed in pricing, et cetera. And this will be all up on our website. When we look at it and we went to that commercial rate, you'll see on the top section, that's the current rate schedule for any of the commercial dumpsters. The bottom part is the proposed under this scenario. Basically, you'll see the one and two yard dumpsters are seeing a decrease in their rate. The four, six, and eight see an increase. Across the board, it varies. Again, it just brings it up to whatever. You'll see some of those display some of that irregularity that we had in those charges. And then when it comes to those unscheduled dumpsters, so those are ones that a resident or someone may just pick and just need for a special project or something, those rates will go there. As we see, the initial rate for the one yard goes down, and then everything's based off of that. So a two yard is twice as much. And how we got to that is it's 175% of the scheduled rate, which means it's 36.50 is what it would cost for a one yard for one day a week per month pickup, so that's four times a month. Take that, divide it by four, you get 9.13, and then you take 175% of that, and that gets to the $16 rounded to a whole number. So all of these rates, we would look into, recommended to the council that you make these effective August 1 of this year. Gives, for two reasons. One gives SMU time to get their system updated. It also gives us the city time on the sewer side, since there's some major changes to some of the larger metered users, that we would get letters out to them, just notifying them of the change specifically, so. Any questions?
I was impressed. You could talk 10 minutes about garbage. It was great.
Well, thank you, Brian. This, this entire study was no small undertaking, to be sure. And, and I applaud you and the finance committee and as the committee of the whole for, for dealing with this, not just in the last few weeks, but over the span of months, actually dealing with it. Is it safe to say, Brian, that the biggest change that most homeowners will, will expect to see is at the transfer station? And they will, there will be a minimum charge.
Correct.
At the transfer station. And if I'm, if I misstate this, correct me, but I think it's up to 500 pounds?
150.
150 pounds. Well, thank you. Okay, 150 pounds.
For $5.
And that will be a $5 charge. So, so basically, if someone forgets to get their, their garbage out to the curb, they can take it out to the, they'll be able to take it out to the transfer station. And usually, we have less than 150 pounds of garbage in the, in the bin, so they would have to pay a $5 fee for that. But anything over that 150 will be based.
It'll be prorated off that $60 per ton, so you bring out 300, 300 pounds, it might be, whatever that is, eight bucks or.
Yeah.
Whatever. I mean, the whole goal into going through this was to make sure that the rates that we're charging for both of those services were fair and equitable to the, our citizens and businesses, that those that use the system are the ones that are paying for their usage, and that we're not pushing, you know, counting on some rates to subsidize for other users. I think one of the biggest things that I don't have that is, the city of Ames does that yearly rate study of cities throughout the state. And when you looked at our, and they do it for sewer and water, and when you looked at it for sewer, our, on our lower end of that, we were high. And on the, when you got up to the bigger users, we were almost at the bottom of that survey. And so really, what this new rate structure does is compresses where we're at. We're still a little higher on the front end, a little lower on the back end, but we've compressed our rate structure to where, you know, we're a lot closer to the average of where others are and brought those users up, so.
Okay. So again, thank you very much. Any other questions for Brian? Okay, if not, and I apologize for, I'm going to back myself up here, and I'm going to read item A into the record once, once more. Item A is an ordinance amending Title Four, Chapter Five, Section 21 of the Spencer City Code concerning solid waste rates and charges. And as Brian pointed out, the finance committee and committee of the whole both recommended this. This is the first filing. Motion made by Lauren. Second by Tracy. Any discussion? Please, please vote by machine.
Nelson, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Balk, aye.
Item B is an ordinance amending Title Four, Chapter Four, Section 11 of the Spencer City Code concerning wastewater service charges. And again, finance committee and committee of the whole recommended this. This is the first filing. Motion made by Tom. Second by Lauren. Any discussion? Please vote by machine. Please vote by machine.
Nelson, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Balk, aye.
C is an ordinance adopting Title Eight, Chapter One, Section Eight of the Spencer City Code concerning use of city real property and easements, um, first filing. And Alec, would you, uh, want to come up and talk about this?
Good evening, everyone. Um, so this is kind of something that we had, uh, started working on back in about November, I believe. And, uh, we've been having conversations with, uh, structures and easements, uh, utilities or other improvements and easements and trying to, um, mitigate the use of that easement for public, uh, uh, property. And so this is kind of what we came up with, um, to try and get it on the books. Because from now, it's, it's been policy not to allow anything, but basically fences in, in those easements. And what this does is kind of clean that up and, and give us, you know, on the books is what it was discussed as, what we were trying to, to clean up.
Okay. So, um, first of all, I would entertain a motion and then we can have some discussion on this if, if need be.
I'll make a motion on that, Mayor.
Okay, motion made by Ron. Second by Tom. Okay, now, does anybody have any questions for Alec, uh, on this?
So Alec, the main concern was, what, what were the main concerns on, on people? Was it putting fences?
So, we don't have on the books that, uh, so say you put a fence up and you can run it, run it along or you can run it in the easement. Say we need to get access to that easement. Any utility provider, us, will try and give you a heads up in an emergency, they're going to go through that fence. And that's, city's not going to be liable for paying, paying that back or any utility provider won't be liable for paying that back. It's on the property owner, um, to?
Right.
At your own risk to put stuff in there.
So, so do you see a, a, in, uh, where I can see the problem is like in backyards where you got a, a utility and they're going to have that, they're going to put a fence up and they're going to have an eight foot section in there or ten footer, whatever the easement is there, about getting out there and mowing between. And it's going to look kind of weird, you know, not using that, you know. And I, I'm just going to be the advocate.
Yeah.
People are going to, I mean constituents are going to complain, well, I can't use my whole yard. You know, they're under the assumption, you know, I know in the front yard, you, you got from the sidewalk, you really technically don't, you can't put nothing in there because you got easements. But now this'll, with this ordinance, it'll incorporate your backyard too?
Yeah.
Most likely.
Easements. And you can still, like I said, you can still go put your fence in that easement and up to your property line if you want. It's just saying that, heads up, what, what was always been policy, this is now on the, on the code book stating, hey, we're going to go through it.
Right.
And we were always going to go through it.
Right. So, so it, so it's not really, it's just stating that it's going to be, because it was always understood that if, if they had to get in there to dig, they were going to?
Some folks have been surprised.
Not, not everybody understood that, but that was always the policy.
It was always the policy. Same thing if people have landscaping, some, you know, sheds have been put where they shouldn't be. And we don't, we want to mitigate the damage that could happen to somebody's property.
Right.
That's kind of where we're at right now.
Okay.
Okay. Council and Balk, did you have?
I do. Yeah, thank you. And I'm not sure the best way to handle this. I would have made a motion probably to table this. Alec, is there a mechanism in place right now where we can either go to the board of adjustment or have an infringing use agreement? If someone wished to say put a shed on skids on an area of an easement, we've allowed in the past individuals to either go through BOA or have an infringing use agreement. Is that correct?
So for public property, BOA can't, it's council. Council has to do the infringing use agreement is what, what we've done in the past there. This ordinance also outlines that mechanism. That mechanism is in place whether we do the ordinance or not, but it's basically saying, when we tell people like this has been policy, um, and it's not in the code book, they ask us, how can you enforce policy? So that's kind of where we're, kind of where we're at.
Yeah, and if, if I can just jump in here for a second.
Yep.
I think that this conversation started?
Because of?
Back in the summer or early fall. There was a committee of the whole meeting in November with regard to this issue.
Yes.
And I believe this, that this ordinance basically came out of conversation in that particular committee of the whole meeting. Correct?
Correct. It was?
Okay.
Because of the conversations that were behind it, it was, it was because of an infringing use agreement. It was?
Yeah.
You have it as policy, you should put it on the books. This is us trying to get it on the books.
So, um, what, what I would recommend, and it, it would take three filings for this to go through anyway. And we, we've had many ordinances come before the council that, where we've changed wording, we've changed things, uh, before the third filing. And what, what I would like to recommend is that regardless of how this goes, whether we pass it or not, um, I would like to see this go to Public Works Committee. And, um, just, just to talk about it a little bit more and flesh out some of the details with regard to this. And, uh, I think that would be, uh, Ron, I believe you're the chair of Public Works and Brian and Tracy. So, um, if we can do that regardless of how the vote goes here, but that would be my recommendation. So, any more discussion?
But it, but it has to pass tonight because if we don't pass it tonight, it would stop. But I mean, that's why?
It could always come back up.
Right. But yeah, but that's why I would vote for it, just so it could go to committee and stuff, so.
Okay.
Just a?
Okay.
Yep.
Any other discussion? Okay. Thank you very much, Alec. Okay, seeing no more discussion, please vote by machine.
Nelson, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Balk, nay.
Okay. Okay, and we will get a Public Works Committee set up here in the near future.
Yep.
Okay. Okay. Item D is a motion to approve change order number one for Cotton's first storm sewer extension project for thirteen thousand fifty dollars to place and compact excess soil on lots five through seven in the Green Industrial Park.
I'll move.
Motion made by Lauren. Second by Donovan. Any discussion?
Dan, can you walk us through this, please?
Um, yeah. Um, as the part of the, uh, the storm, the west storm sewer project, we had a, a lot of extra soil out there. And, and part of that project was to remove that from the, from that land on that project. And so that ended up getting hauled by that contractor out to the Green Industrial Park. This change order is to remove some topsoil and spread and compact that soil that was moved, removed or moved down there from a previous contract to, uh, spread, to remove topsoil, spread and compact this and, and replace the topsoil to raise up, uh, the, to the, the level of the Green Industrial Park lots to get it out of the, uh, floodplain.
Okay. Any other questions, discussion?
Just, just one little quick comment on this. I think it's a good, good way for people working back and forth here because we now have a business that's going to be probably locating in one of those lots that we're talking about. And we'll get it up out of the floodplain. So it's been a really good assist to get that project moving and to keep it moving within the community, so.
Okay. Anyone else? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item E is an ordinance amending Title Five, Chapter Five, Section Three, Subsection E of the Spencer City Code concerning commercial pesticide and herbicide application. The Park and Recreation and Culture Committee reviewed this last week. This is the first filing. Motion made by Tom. Second by Donovan. Jared, did you want to speak to this for a moment?
Yeah, good evening. Um, so since we discuss, we've been discussing the Emerald Ash Bore a little bit. And the ash trees and the public right of ways and stuff. And we wanted to give the homeowners the option to treat those ash trees in the right of way if they would like. But one thing we were concerned with is, you know, we want a professional that is certified in treating those trees chemically. Um, and so we just wanted to require that those chemical applicators just come here, sign with us, there's no fee for that permit or anything. It's just, we want a list of your credentials, basically, and a list of, and who's going to be doing that particular work. So it kind of protects the homeowners, gives homeowners an option to come to city hall. We hand them a list of certified contractors that we know of. Um, and then those contractors can go and do that work. So that's basically what this, this ordinance will do. Just requires those chemical applicators to give us their credentials and we'll keep a list of it, so.
But only for trees in public right of way?
Correct. Yep.
Okay. Any other questions for Jared? Okay. Thank you, Jared. Please vote by machine.
Nelson, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Balk, aye.
F is a motion to approve the Iowa Department of Transportation Agreement for Urban State Traffic Engineering Program U-Step Project for Grand Avenue Signal Equipment Upgrades. Motion made by Brian. Second by Donovan. Any discussion?
Dan, um, what is this agreement? I mean, I would ask Mark, but he's not here tonight, so I, on this agreement, what are, what are we getting with this? With the DOT?
We're getting money to help with the, uh, increased costs of the traffic light, the redo of the traffic lights on Grand Avenue. That those, that project kept because of different things, increasing in price and increasing in price. And, and so this will take care of the, uh, the engineers on the project suggested we apply for this to help cover that increase in cost. And this, I don't, it pretty much does that, so it helps us out a lot. It's just a traffic light grant, safety grant that the DOT has.
Thank you for your information.
Anything else for Dan? If not, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries. G is a motion to approve the Iowa Opioid Allocation Memorandum of Understanding for allocation of opioid Class A action suit settlement proceeds. Motion made by Tom. Second by Donovan. Any discussion? Somebody just talk through this.
Sure. Chief Warburton, would you like to, uh?
I, uh, Mayor, maybe I should?
I'm sorry.
It's not easy to explain, but I'll try.
Okay.
This action really is in support of Clay County. A number of Iowa counties, uh, joined with the, with the state, uh, who joined other governmental entities across the country in certain, uh, litigation against manufacturers and producers of opioids. And, uh, we've been asked by the state and the counties to, um, join in accepting this agreement for how the proceeds are going to be allocated. And the way it works is the proceeds are allocated between the state and the counties and then we'll need to negotiate with the county, uh, as to the city's share. But at least we'll be getting some of the funding, uh, here locally. The funds can only be used, uh, for opioid-related expenditures, uh, treatment programs, education programs, those sorts of things. Uh, I can't give you a, a dollar amount, uh, as to what we'll get, but it'll be more than if we don't do it.
Okay. Thank you, Don. Any other questions, discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries. H is a motion to approve the city of Spencer job description for the full-time cemetery technician. Motion made by Brian. Second by Tracy. Any discussion?
I see Jessica's here, so she probably had to write up this, right Jessica?
Yes, I did.
Well, you might as well get your face on the TV, so, you know, they might have thought you weren't around, so let's, let's get you up there.
I even sat in the very back. Good evening. So this is, um, just some paperwork to tidy up the position of full-time cemetery tech that we had approved on the budget, uh, for the next fiscal year. So, um, Brian recommended it, as did Dan. And I ran the job description through Jared, who was the department head for this position. So if this is approved as written, then I can post that tomorrow morning.
So, so that, that goes throughout the departments for our city employees and, or is it going out publicly?
It, we post concurrently, internal and external, just because the job market is so hot right now and we want to get the very best candidate. So we post it everywhere.
Everywhere.
Yep, we sure do.
All right, thank you.
Yep. Any other questions? I'll stay here for the next two.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I was going to say, don't go anywhere. Okay. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. I is a motion to approve the city of Spencer employee handbook edits effective July one, twenty twenty-two. And this was a recommendation of the Personnel Committee. Uh, motion made by Lauren. Second by Donovan. Any discussion? Or Jessica, let's, uh, do you want to?
Yeah, I can give it a quick run-through. So, um, based on the recommendations that Carlson and Detman Consultation Group had done just prior to my coming, um, they had recommended my position be created. And so, um, with that, they also recommended a list of, I think it was about thirty-five, um, just personnel, um, revisions for our handbook and also some recruiting revisions. So they, um, the city manager at that time put it on hold until my position was filled, so I'd have something to do. So, um, I took those, um, and went through the handbook page by page, which is a hundred and eight pages currently, which is a really long handbook. And it's because it has so much detail that normally would be in like an SOP, a standard operating procedure for a specific department, for say police or fire, admin, that kind of thing. Um, so I took out those pieces and just left what should actually typically be in an employee handbook that applies to everyone. And then I sent it to Don and he reviewed it to make sure I wasn't missing anything. So, do you want me to name those or?
Anybody have any questions about that? I think it was included in our packet.
Yes, did I scare you with a hundred and eight pages?
You did.
Okay, good. I got it down to sixty-four. Sixty-four.
She didn't say anything about the font size.
It's very small.
Okay. All right. Anything else for, for Jessica on this item? Okay. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. J is a motion to approve the amended city of Spencer Healthy Life Program.
Make a motion on that, Mayor.
Motion made by Ron. Second by Brian. Okay, Jessica, as long as you're there.
Yeah, so this is a wonderful program. The Healthy Life Program reimburses, um, per fiscal year up to one hundred dollars for each, um, employee that is enrolled in our health insurance and their spouse that is also enrolled in our insurance to, um, really? to really encourage them to take care of their bodies and in turn, their mental health, too. So, the Well-being Committee has a fund that this comes out of, so it's already in the budget. We've never gone over or even close to actually using all of it. But we wanted to better identify how we could encourage employees to utilize it, because I think all of us have Fitbits by now, so. So, I met with the Personnel Committee and took the Well-being Committee's recommendations to add qualified fitness equipment. And we discussed that we should make sure that we itemize it, so that it's not just open for interpretation. So, it's adding qualified equipment as treadmill, stationary exercise bike, rowing machine, exercise therapy and medicine ball, or elliptical machine.
Okay. Any questions? Thank you, Jessica. Are you work on this?
You're welcome.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion carries. K is a resolution awarding contract for 2022 Rocket Slide Restoration Project to Mid-State Builders for $32,054. This is a recommendation from the Park, Rec, and Culture Committee and the Park Board. Motion made by Tom. Second by Tracy. Jared, would you like to talk a little bit about the Rocket Slide? I think that you probably know more about this Rocket Slide over the past year than anybody in Spencer history.
Well, I don't know about that, but... Yeah, so we received two quotes for the site work on that project to do the footings, set the rocket, so stand it up, as well as prep the sub-base for the safety surfacing that the council approved last fall, I believe. And then sidewalks around that, and from East Leach Park to the actual rocket. So, it will be ADA accessible as well. So, we received two. Midstates was the lower of the two at $32,054. MLS was the other one that we got quotes for them at $46,990. So, we have about $17,500 in donations. We, the city had originally pledged $50,000 towards the project. And so, with what work we have left to complete, the city's portion will be about $25,500, so.
Any questions for Jared? Jared, could you remind the public, and me, exactly where the Rocket Slide is going to be?
So, it'll be in, in East Leach Park. There's a green space in between the current skate park and East Leach Playground. It'll be just off the southwest corner of the playground, so.
Okay.
Is Mickey ever gonna join him?
It's, it's in the shed, but he needs a lot of work.
And Jared, the estimated completion date?
So, right now, we have an estimated completion date of August 1st. After that, Midstates would receive $150 a day penalty, so.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much, Jared. Please vote by machine.
Nelson, I. Larson, I. Wunschel, I. Hanson, I. Reed, I. Balk, I.
L is a motion to approve change order number one to 2021 Spencer Police Department Parking Lot Replacement Project for $6,459.76 to remove and replace the remaining driveway pavement between the Spencer PD and the SMU Plant Building. Motion made by Lauren. Second by Donovan. Any discussion? Yeah, go ahead, Donovan. Kind of a site, did they get started this week? They did? Okay. Okay. All right. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion carries. M is a motion to approve the purchase agreement with Three Pines Property LLC and Sandra Thiessen for the City of Spencer's purchase of Parcel B of the Northwest Quarter, of the Southwest Quarter, Northwest One-Four, Southwest One Quarter, Section 6 Township 96 North, Range 36 West of the 5th PM, 5.686 acres, Clay County, Iowa, for $250,000. Okay, Lauren, you got that one, and the second was Tom. Okay, any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I guess before we go to vote, as I believe I may be the only one casting a negative vote tonight on this, I wanted to explain my reasoning why. I think everyone at this table hopes to see our community grow and continue to be successful, as it has for a very long time, and we all want to be a part of that. And I'm very much in favor of that. I think when we do those types of things, though, however, we should hold ourselves to a plan and a timeline, and have markers in place, and make sure that when we're spending money on these types of developments, that it's a very clear path of where we're going. And although I, I see some value in this land purchase, and ultimately, if it does go through, I, I think there will be, I hope, an added benefit in the future. My concern is that, at least as of right now, I have not heard a specific plan for, for this action, and that's a little concerning for me.
Okay. Any other comments or discussion?
Yeah, and I, I understand Brian's concerns on this. I, I just, and I have the concerns that we're just gonna sit on this property, and I, you know, I think we're gonna have to hold that it, that it's out there and available right away. I mean, I, I have concerns that we don't just sit on this property. I know we have some other ideas, but, but we're not in the business of developers and stuff. So, I think it's a thing for Dan to understand that, that we don't, we're not in the business of holding this, and we'd be really interested in marketing it right away, so.
Okay. Anyone else? Comments are duly noted. Okay. Seeing no more discussion, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed nay? Motion carries. Item 7, Engineers Report. Brian.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Brian Schmidt, Cruz, Kate, and Nelson. We do have several projects going now that the weather's straightened out. Corey Juergens Construction will finish the final intake replacement on the 2021 intake replacement project. MLS has started grading work at the boat ramp project on the West Leach Park Boat Ramp. They're kind of waiting for water to go down. The river's gone up the last week, week and a half, of course, now that they're all mobbed in. We do feel like they'll get a better job if that river goes down a little bit. So, we look forward to that, hopefully, in the next couple days or a week. They did start work on the PD parking lot replacement. They removed that tree within the right of way today. They plan on removing at least the Phase 1 of the pavement tomorrow. So, they'll get moving on that. And then Cotton's First Edition Storm Sewer on the north side of West 18th Street. That project's substantially complete now. There's a little bit of material there to get cleaned up, but they got that in, in good shape. And I think we're making progress on getting the easement for the 25th Street Southwest Sewer Project. So, hopefully, by next council meeting, there'll be some action on that. Any other questions?
So, once that, once that agreement on 25th is, is, is made, then we, we can put it out for bids at that point, or what, what's the process on that? Just so those people kind of know where we're rolling and how we're...
We still have to go through the assessment proceedings on that project. So, I think, if I'm correct, that we wanted to get that easement kind of negotiated first before moving forward with that. So, they can kind of go hand in hand, but we don't want to go out for bids until we know that,
that we have an assessment project, proceedings will move forward. Thank you.
Anything else? Thanks, Brian.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Appreciate it. Item 8, City Managers Report. Dan?
I have a few things. The CGI thing I talked about last time, they're gonna be in town filming June 9th and 10th in time for, when we're decorated for Flag Fest. So, that should be, that should be a really cool video when it's done, because of, the city's gonna be good and decorated. I've also been talking with the Bird Scooter people. They'd like to bring scooters to town. We had it, an agreement, I sent it to Don, he edited some, I sent it back to them. So, we're in that process to work on, on that, and you'll hear more about that later. And also, on this, hearing your comments on the property we just purchased, I would like to have KCN put together an engineering agreement to build the, for the street through there and the infrastructure. Whether we move on it to build it right away, or just have the plans sitting there ready to go, either way, it should be good. So, I'm gonna ask them to put that together, and you'll be seeing that at a future council meeting.
Any questions for Dan? Okay, thank you, Dan. Under the Mayor's Report, got a few things. First of all, Friday, May 20th, is National Bike to Work Day. And we are going to have great weather, I guarantee it, on Friday. And, and I would encourage, I would encourage city employees and businesses in Spencer to encourage their employees to bike to work. Gas prices are a little high, and the, the gas prices for bikes are not very great. It's, and you, you get a great benefit. You get exercise, it's eco-friendly. And again, I'd like to challenge people on Friday, if you can, bike to work. It would be a great thing. And I think you'll see something about the Bike to Work Day on the City Facebook page as well. Also, with regard to bikes, I've made this comment before, but I'm seeing a few more bicycles on the sidewalks on Grand Avenue. And just a reminder to those folks who are riding bicycles on Grand Avenue, you're not supposed to. It can impede traffic, foot traffic on Grand Avenue. People coming out of stores are not looking for bicycles going up and down the sidewalk. So, please keep your bicycles off of Grand Avenue unless you're walking them on the sidewalk. Second, the Emerald Ash Bore, I think Jared's done a nice job putting together the program with regard to the Emerald Ash Bore. And there will be a letter that will be going out to homeowners who have trees in the right of way, and what, what the city program is. So, be looking for that. Thirdly, on Saturday, I was fortunate enough to take part in the Downtown Downstairs Program. It was a fundraiser for Main Street, and it was an excellent program. We got to tour five businesses in Spencer. Let's see, it was Hanson's, let's see, Hanson's, it was the Bridle Shop, the Hen House, and Game State, and Prest. And they all had an interesting history to them. The, the tours were, were great. And it was also interesting to see what those downstairs are being utilized for today. But the history of them was, was very, very interesting. So, thanks to Main Street for, for putting that on. Also, I want to mention that, yes...
I think if you're missing a fur from the seventies, you can go to try and claim it at Hanson's.
Yes, indeed.
I saw a picture of that.
Indeed. I, they, they do have some furs from some, actually, some, from some people that I know. And, and we may have to make some contact with them. Yeah. And they had the valuation of the fur on there. It was interesting, very interesting, yeah, very interesting down there. The Historic Preservation Commission is continuing with their lecture series on Tuesday and Thursday in the City Council Chambers this week at 6 o'clock. On Tuesday, it'll be Kirby Schmidt will be presenting with regard to the Sandboard Maps, and these were insurance maps that were done in the twenties, thirties, and forties by the Sandboard Insurance Company. They weren't done on a yearly basis, but they were done on a periodic basis. And so, you can really follow the history of a community with those insurance maps, and Kirby will have a lot more to say about that. And then on Thursday at 6 o'clock is the History of the Clay County Fair, and Jeremy Parsons will be doing that, and that should be very interesting to everyone. Fifth, the Railroad Crossing at Grand Avenue is taking place this week. And I, I really want to thank the DOT for putting up the signage last week to prepare everyone for the construction that's going on there. And I made a couple trips up and down Grand today, just to see how traffic was flowing. And it seems like people have made that adjustment. Didn't see too many trucks on Grand Avenue, so it appears that they are taking that detour on the beltways around town. So, that job should be completed next week sometime. So, again, and I want to thank the citizens of Spencer for their patience with regard to this project, but I think it will be extremely good when, when it is finished. Then, six, item six on, on my report. The Senior Center is still, there's still some contention with regard to what's gonna happen with the Senior Center. And I know there's a committee that wants to save the Senior Center. And I believe there's a, a meeting on Thursday, May 19th, I believe, at 5 o'clock. So, if people want to attend that, whichever way you feel about whether the Senior Center should be closed or whether it should remain open, you might want to attend that meeting. And then lastly is the North Y. And a week ago, the City Council and the County Board of Supervisors met and talked about the North Y and what some of the options were that the DOT presented to both of us, maybe three, four weeks ago. There was no consensus with regard to what the supervisors or the council wanted to do up there, wanted to recommend. We had a lot of questions for the DOT with regard to what should be done up on the, the North Y. So, we, we have drafted a letter, that letter will be going to the DOT, and with regard to the questions and the data that we want, want to have them send to us. But I think what there was consensus about, from the council and from the supervisors, was the fact that what we want is we want safety. We want that intersection to be safe. But we also want it to also not detract from any kind of commercial development that we're planning up on the north end of town as well. So, we, we've got some, some things that we have to work out with them, and we will be in contact with them, and we will be letting you know what's, what's going on as we progress down the road. Okay. Item 10, Counseling Committee Reports. Dan?
Now, upcoming meetings, we have a Northwest Iowa League of Cities Meeting on Thursday. I think there's a few of us that are going up, going down there for that. Let Teresa know if you want to do that, and then our regular council meeting on the 6th.
And then we need to get a Public Works Committee meeting scheduled as well. So, Teresa, will you be contacting members?
I can follow up tomorrow on that.
Okay. Thank you, Dan. Item 11, Motion to Approve the Bills and Claims. Motion made by Brian. Second by Donovan. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion carries. Item 12, Other Business and Opportunity to Address the Council. I know we have some folks that do want to address the council tonight. So, when you address the council, just please state your name and address for the record, so Teresa can get that down for us, okay? so Teresa can get that down for us. Okay? So. First up is a frequent flyer.
Mike, Stally Pit Project. Upcoming, the Quanis Daybreakers and High Noon, I believe, will be doing a cookie bucket and a drive-through burger. And I believe that's the 30th of this month. I'm not sure. I stand corrected on that. But the latter part of this month, if you want good eats, Quanis does a great job. And they will be supporting the Stally Trail Pit Project. If anybody wants to buy a Stally Pit Trail medallion or challenge coin, it's $500. Get ahold of Park and Rec, 580-7260. And it might not say Park and Rec. It might just say an extension number, but you, you'll have the right number. And if you don't feel that $500 works into your budget, anything will work. Anything will work. Be it, be it a dollar, be it $500, any money is appreciated. Midwest Mechanical, I want to thank them. They stepped up. Pixel Electric, I want to thank them. They stepped up in support of the trail project. Mike, JR Shoemaker has started on some minor cement tearouts and, and patches. Doesn't really want to get into the big stuff because he doesn't want to get hit by the rain and he doesn't want to tear up things. And so he'll start on all the small stuff. So if it does rain, no big deal. He'll, he won't tear anything up. And looking forward to, to making that place look awesome this year. Any questions?
Mike, thanks for your effort. I appreciate your time that you've put into this. I know it's been a good couple years here for you. So I appreciate your time and effort.
Yeah. And we, I just wanted to say thanks to, to Quanis and Pixlers and Midwest Mechanical as well, too. So we really appreciate that stuff. And we've been able to make up a lot of ground in our ma, trail maintenance efforts here in the last, last couple of years or so. And thanks, Mike, Mike and Bob, too. So we appreciate that.
Yep. Thank you both. Anyone else? And our first speaker, by the way, for the record, was Mike Harlem.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, gentlemen of the council, and members of the city staff, members of the community. My name is Hernani Fritas, and I would like to address the Senior Center commentary that the mayor made just a few minutes ago. So as it stands right now, the Senior Center is closing. And I would like to extend and reinforce the mayor's invitation for everybody in the community to go to their meeting this Thursday, May 19th, at 5:00 PM at the Senior Center. Like the mayor mentioned, there is a group of the community that has been stepping up, has stepped up, and has presented a proposal to the current board of the Senior Center. And the, the board was not very pleased with the proposal. They were appreciative of it. They said they would like to see a little bit more details. So the same group will bring a second proposal, a little bit giving a few more specifics about how they would like to keep the doors open. So if, if you believe that the Senior Center should stay open, or if you believe that that is not the case, it should close because in some ways it utilizes resources from the community, I would like to reinforce the invite for you guys to be present in the meeting on the 19th. Thank you.
Thank you, Hernani.
I'm Bill Mueller. I live in rural Spencer. I wanted to stop and talk just a little bit about TJ Maxx and that project. First of all, I want to thank the mayor, the, all the city councilmen for their help. It's something that did take quite a while to get here. And there's no way I could have done it without the city's help. So I think people in town need to know that. I hear a lot of good stuff about it around town. People come up to me and they think I did this by myself. And I try to remind them what the city has done in order to make this happen. And that the city is helping with a number of projects that would not have happened without their input. So, once again, I just want to thank you. And if there's any questions that anyone has about the project, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Any questions for Bill?
Not a question, but a thank you. I appreciate your comments towards us. But speaking personally, I thank you for your time and effort. I know that you have put a lot of effort into it. And I think we're all excited about the economic impact that we hope it will have, so.
Yeah. I, I do think it'll be a lot because I, I'm already hearing some interest because of it coming for more businesses coming to Spencer. So, yeah, I do hope that that happens. And certainly the traffic, the people traveling to the store, that'll be a destination for a lot of people and hopefully help a lot of businesses in town as well.
On, on top of the TJ Maxx, you know, there's a lot of areas that you've purchased and cleaned up and moved some businesses around. And, and just for everything you're helping the City of Spencer with businesses and so on, just thank you. And so your, your efforts aren't unnoticed by myself.
Thank you. I enjoy doing it. So. I can't stop asking my wife. She, she says, "Stop, stop." But I can't stop. So.
So, Bill, I think the, the question on the minds of a lot of people are probably, when will TJ Maxx open?
Okay.
What are, what are your plans for the procedural and development of the project?
The actual work is planned on starting August 1st and completion in October and opening hopefully sometime in October. But they are real concerned about supply chain and how that might affect them. And there's, there are certain issues that they're not sure they have the supplies. I know for another project that I'm working on, I need rooftop air conditioners. And they're 40 to 50 weeks out. But, you know, that can really cause a problem for a project. TJ Maxx purchased 500 of these before the shortage. So they've got what they need for a number of their stores, but that's just one item. There's, there's a lot. But yeah, hopefully this fall is what they're expecting.
Okay.
All right.
Any other questions or comments for Bill? Well, Bill, thank you very much. And I echo what other councilmen have said with regard to your efforts in Spencer. And thank you very much. Appreciate your efforts.
You bet. Thank you all very much.
Anyone else like to address the council? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion made by Donovan.
Second.
Second by Tracy. Any discussion? I guess not. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay? Motion carries.